Called to order the September 21st regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. Item 1.2, adoption of the agenda, I entertain a motion.
So moved second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. We will move to item 2.1, student representatives, and I know that we have Garima, who is a representative from Moundsview High School here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Great to have student representatives back with the start of the school year.
Is it on?
Yeah, great, yeah, perfect.
Hi, I'm Garima Kakiwara. I am a junior at Moundsview High School and I'll be the school board representative this year. And so far, the transition back to school has been pretty good. It's been a little hard to transition from the two-hour classes to the six classes a day, but I know the majority of students like it better. And this week is homecoming week, which is a really big week at Moundsview. And we've had the record amount of participation in spirit weeks, the after-school events. We had a man jet yesterday, which is like a man pageant, it's one of the events we have. And we had, I think the most people show up in the last two years that I've been at Moundsview. And student council is working really hard towards the homecoming dance, which we're so excited we get to put on this year. And we're also having the pep fest on the football field, which is the first year we're doing this. And the first few weeks of school have, I think, been pretty good overall. There's nothing bad that I've been told about it.
Excellent, thank you for the update and for making the time this evening.
Thank you.
Enjoy homecoming.
Yeah, have fun. We'll move to item 2.2, open forum public comments. We have five people this evening at the time the school board will hear comments from the public. Interested speakers have signed up in the back of the room and have reviewed the open forum guidelines in front of them and on the screens. We'd ask that speakers come to the podium as called and state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be allotted one minute this evening, and we'll start with Matt Oquist. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, I was under the impression we had three minutes. Okay. Take one of the passes down. While all your passes are down, first I want to start out by saying thank you. A few years ago, I came before the school board to talk to you guys about some challenging test scores at Pinewood Elementary School. After that conversation, you guys worked with Pinewood and implemented a program to reach out to students who were close to passing but below the passing line for reading scores, and implemented a program to bring them in before school, provide them lunch, and to give them additional instruction to benefit them so that they could get through the pass. I'm a member for doing that and really reaching out and trying to make a difference. But tonight, I am here to talk about Edgewood. Because as you look at test scores this year, there are some challenging numbers when you look at the Edgewood test scores. If you look at that first slide, it's got your equity promise there that says that there will not be predicted outcomes based on just a little bit of...
We are at time. I will reset the clock and provide each speaker two minutes this evening.
Thank you. As you look at slide two, you can see the reading scores for Edgewood, Hyview, and Chippewa, with Edgewood's score being below 50 percent definitely, a lower score than Chippewa if you look at that slide. If you look at slide three, you can see the difference in math scores, a wide range between Chippewa and Edgewood. And finally, if you look at slide four that I handed you, the dramatic difference between the science score for eighth graders in Edgewood, Hyview, and Chippewa. Below 30 percent for Edgewood. As a esteemed school to have the S below the 30 percent test numbers. Right. Now, I understand it was COVID, all these numbers are COVID numbers. Understand that there was less kids that took the test, there was actually more kids that took the test. Sixty-two percent of the 2019 numbers took the test in 2021 at Edgewood. So it's a significant, a statistically significant sample. Let me keep going. Moundsview prides themselves on being...
We are at time.
A group that's about outstanding achievement. If you look at slide six...
We will review the bench copy.
...below the state average.
We are at time.
Below the state average is not outstanding achievement, below the state average is below average achievement.
Thank you very much, we are at time. So we're going to welcome up Tim Root.
I do want to say as a parent in this district, to only allow two minutes for serious issues from the parents of students once a month is not enough.
I appreciate the feedback. Tim Root?
If you go, you took a lot of my time for every parent.
Certainly.
I'd like to give, I've got two minutes, I'd like to give one.
Thank you. I'll try to make it. The scores are below average, I don't think that's acceptable. I think one of the challenges then is, what do you do about it? One of the things that we really struggled with with Edgewood is Edgewood has made clear that their focus is to be an anti-racist school. In the letter that we got home, it said Edgewood is on a long and complex journey toward becoming an anti-racist school. That was to all our families. I want to send my kid to a esteemed school. This doesn't say that they're a esteemed school, it says they're an anti-racist school. The state doesn't test for anti-racist, the state tests for science, math, and reading. I think that as a parent, it's my job to teach values to my child. As a school district, it's your job to make sure that you're teaching math, reading, and science to our children. Please, when you see numbers that are below the state average, focus on teaching those topics to our kids so that they can learn and get the education that they need that's promised from the equity promise, unlike the other schools where they're meeting state standards, exceeding state standards. At Edgewood, we're not focusing on...
Thank you, you are at time. Tim Root, good evening.
Good evening. I had some pretty nice prepared remarks, I thought, anyway, and I had no intention of coming back here and being the mask guy again. But I just would like to clarify, and I know you're not obligated to respond to me, but this is indeed a Moundsview Public School building, correct?
Correct.
And masks are mandated in Moundsview Public School buildings, correct?
Correct.
So here we are. I've been sitting in here for, I don't know, an hour and 15 minutes now. We've had people unmasked here the whole time. No one has even politely asked for that policy to be followed. If we can't trust you to, you take those basic steps here at your own meetings, how can we trust you to take care of our kids with these things? I'm just, I'm baffled. I didn't want to talk about this. I wanted to talk about how important mental health is for students and staff, just all around, but especially during COVID. But I can't because you guys just refuse to act on this stuff until you're pushed by parents. Why is it our job?
We are at time, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll welcome Alita Schulte. Two minutes.
Hi, Alita Schulte, 28 Pheasant Lane, North Oaks. My heart is heavy as I reflect on the decision-making process over the last two months. What it boils down to for me is that I feel our school board and superintendent have abdicated their authority and washed their hands of the responsibility for representing parents regarding the mask policy for our students. Back in July and August, I had conversations with board members and the superintendent regarding this issue, all of whom assured me that they all, the whole board unanimously so agreed that masks should be parent choice. Then, after a county called a meeting on August 10th with all the school district superintendents in Ramsey County, they did a 180. How can it go from a unanimous belief in parent choice to masks being required? Who made this decision? Well, at our last school board meeting, it was made clear that the county's legal council made that decision, and that the superintendent and the school board can't go against that legal council. So my question also is this, you know, William Moore, Ramsey County Public Health School Support Director, has said that their guidance is just that, it's guidance, they do not have the authority to mandate schools to require masks. So my question to you and to the county and whoever's making these decisions, where is the science that supports the safety and efficacy of mask requirements? Nobody in the district or the county gives a concrete answer, they just give vague responses referencing CDC guidance, or county guidance, or county data. Have any one of you asked the county to provide real scientific information with randomized, controlled, peer-reviewed studies that explain the possible risks and benefits of wearing masks for children? Children wearing masks for eight-plus hours a day? There is a lack of safety and efficacy behind these decisions for children to wear these masks all day long. Where there is risk, there must be choice, and this choice should stand in the hands of parents.
We are at time, thank you. Matt Wetham?
Oquist.
Passes, we'll move to Lois Cromery.
I'm Lois Cromery, I live at 2363 County Road I in Moundsview, and I just want some information because I don't have any children in your school system, so I don't really know what they are teaching. Is critical race theory being taught in the Moundsview school system?
The board does not engage in public dialogue during open forum. We are happy to follow up at your request, so if you'd be interested in answers to questions, we're happy to follow up in writing.
Okay.
So, Colin, could you follow up with Lois? And make sure that she's directed in the right direction? Thank you. We'll move to item 2.3, announcements. Shawna will acknowledge the gifts.
All right, thank you, Jonathan. So there are 54 gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $6,976.04. And there were 14 gifts for the Ralph Reader Food Shelf this period for a total of $46,968.50. It's recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Thank you. Additional announcements, upcoming meeting dates, October 7th, there is a work session of the board at 6:00 PM, and October 12th, a regular meeting of the board at 7:00 PM, both here at the district center. Move to item 2.4, superintendent's report, Superintendent Lennox.
Thank you, Jonathan. Just a few things this evening. So first, this is our first meeting back since the start of the school year, and while it's only been 11 days, somehow it feels longer because we're already approaching the end of September. I've had the chance, along with other members of our district team, to be out and visiting our buildings, and it certainly is good to see students back in our classrooms. I know there's a lot of settling in that's been happening at each of our schools and across the district. Of course, we expect that'll continue through the first weeks, even months of the school year. I would want to report, though, that our new spaces really have been very well-received. Been great to see students and staff taking advantage of the many expanded, flexible spaces that have been created throughout the district. I expect that we'll continue to see that take place through this school year and well into the future. And since I'm mentioning our new spaces, I'd also point out that later in the agenda this evening, we're going to have the opportunity to highlight the completion of our construction projects. At that time, we will be sharing more information about each of our buildings and the opportunity that the public will have to come into our schools to view those spaces coming up later this week. And then finally, I just wanted to take a minute and thank the Moundsview Educational Foundation for their support. They are certainly an incredible partner with the school district and recently held their annual fundraising event, Rock the Schoolhouse. We appreciate all of those that were involved, both in the planning and attending of that event. The funds raised certainly do make a significant difference for our students and the students across the school district, and we want to extend a heartfelt thank you to everyone involved in that event. That'll end my report.
Thank you, Chris. We'll go to item 3.0, approval consented, agenda, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll take a sound of 4.1, certified proposed property tax levy report, but I believe there is action this evening. There is action this evening, correct?
Yes.
Perfect, so Bernice, welcome, our executive director of business services.
Good evening. State law requires school boards to certify their proposed taxes by September 30th. Attached was a summary of estimated proposed property taxes for payable 2022 with comparisons to actual taxes payable 2021. The estimated proposed taxes total $63,179,719.34 for all funds. Proposed levies for school districts carry the option of levying the maximum, and right now, the system is going through some recalculations. This weekend, MBE announced they're still having certifying problems, so that's why during this time, we authorize, generally authorize a maximum, because they need to settle those computations down. And in December, we'll come back for the TNT proposal, and that is on December 7th at 2021 at 6:00 PM for the truth in taxation.
Any questions for Bernice? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the maximum on the levy limitation certification 2021 payable 2022.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I think just to, you know, for people who aren't familiar with this process, I think it's good to just explain that this is, we're kind of setting the ceiling here by this action tonight, and then on December 7th is when we actually set the actual. It's just good for folks to understand that.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item 4.2, ratification of employment contracts, and we welcome Julie, executive director of human resources. Good evening.
Good evening. So tonight, we're bringing for your approval three contracts. The first one is our nutrition services labor agreement. So we've negotiated the 2021, or, I'm sorry, the 21, 22, 22, 23 labor agreement. The details of that are outlined in the materials you were given. The total cost of this package is 6.18 percent. And then just a reminder that our nutrition services is paid through the nutrition services fund and not out of the general fund. And so tonight, we're asking for approval of the 21, 23 nutrition services labor agreement.
And do we have to approve these individually?
Yeah, let's do that.
Where's the slate?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yep. I'd just like to point out that, you know, kind of our parameters and the guidelines that the board sets are, and guidance that we provide, and this contract falls within that, is we always seek to settle our contracts mid-range. It's an important principle that we've historically had, and this meets that, and I'm happy to support it.
Yeah, I would add that, you know, as quickly as we settle some of these contracts, as we did earlier this evening, you know, multiple closed sessions with our negotiating team, and a lot of really good work has gone into each of these on behalf of both the administration delegated by the board as well as our bargaining units. You know, I see Stacy Van Deport representing the teachers here this evening, so really appreciate the partnership with our labor units and bargaining groups to get us to this point this evening, so. Any further discussion on this first contract? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
So the second contract before you tonight is the principal labor agreement. Again, this contract covers the years 2021 through 2023. The details were provided to you. The total cost of this package is 4.88 percent. I should also note that with nutrition services and with principals, we met only twice, which is getting this done pretty quick, and to what you pointed out, it is, both sides need to agree to this. And so with all the groups tonight, they have ratified the agreement already, and we're looking for approval tonight, and so we're asking for approval of the 21, 23 principal labor agreement.
I entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The last contract before you tonight is our teacher labor agreement. We met six times with our teacher group. We met several times over the summer and came to a tentative agreement on August 17th. So this contract covers the 21, 22, 22, 23 school years as well. And again, I wanted to point out that this group covers all of the teachers in the district. It also includes our adult basic education teachers, our early childhood family education teachers, and our learning resource teachers, as well as all of our regular classroom and special education staff. So tonight, we're asking for approval of the teacher labor agreement. The total cost of the package is 7.83 percent.
I entertain a motion to approve the contract as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Julie, thank you for incredible work at this, and again, thank you to our staff. I mean, we know that the people who are in our buildings, day in and day out, hour after hour, are the heart and soul of who we are. We look forward to, you know, the ongoing discussions with our parents, our clerical, and our custodians in the coming weeks, but really appreciate the work as evidenced by the great report of opening of schools that Superintendent Lennox gave earlier today. So thanks to you, Julie, and thanks to the entire team for this really good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item 4.3, construction celebrations, a report from Superintendent Lennox.
Yeah, thank you. So this evening, we just wanted to take a moment to recognize the successful completion of our construction projects. And in doing that, I think it's important to remember that this project actually started six years ago. It was the formation of the facilities task force that initiated the work that happened across the district in construction. The facilities task force was a 39-member group that represented parents, residents, and staff, and they spent more than six months reviewing data, collecting information, and investigating questions about what needs were across the district in terms of construction, and then made recommendations moving forward. And specifically, I wanted to highlight four key areas from their recommendations that are part of the construction that we did across the district. The first, of course, was to add space. And specifically, the facilities task force recommended that each of our schools add the space they needed to serve students at their sites. And over the course of construction, we certainly added space. In total, we've added more than 200,000 square feet of space across our schools, and we also renovated 135,000 square feet of existing spaces during the construction project. A second recommendation by the task force was that schools create flexible instructional spaces, and in a little bit, we're going to actually play a video, and you'll see that we've accomplished that as well. The new flexible spaces allow our teachers and school staff to increase student engagement and really personalize the work that they're doing with students at each of our sites. A third recommendation from the task force was to make the necessary safety and security enhancements, and today, if you visit our sites, you'll notice each of them now has a secure entrance, along with a variety of additional safety features that were added as part of our construction project. And finally, the task force recommended that we improve our infrastructure. And as a result, all of our schools now have either renovated, upgraded, or replaced their HVAC units. We've also increased our wireless bandwidth and improved our aging and efficient lighting systems. So lots that have happened over the course of the project, but definitely hit the key areas recommended by the task force. So at this time, what we'd like to do is move to a video that captures some of the highlights from our construction efforts across the district. It also demonstrates, you know, if you watch some of the four areas that were discussed as recommended by the task force. If you go ahead and play the video. ...of the project, but definitely hit the key areas recommended by the task force. So at this time, what we'd like to do is move to a video that captures some of the highlights from our construction efforts across the district. It also demonstrates, if you watch some of the four areas that were discussed as recommended by the task force. If you go ahead and play the video. Go ahead and play the video. Well, I think the video does a nice job of capturing just some of the spaces that have been added to our schools throughout the construction project. Tonight really is the last scheduled construction presentation we have for the board, and we are happy to report one final time that all of these projects were completed on time and on budget. Now, we'd be remiss this evening if we didn't also thank, really, the school board for all of your leadership throughout this process, old architects and engineers, Kraus Anderson, who has served as our construction manager, and the hundreds of staff, parents, and community members that were part of our school design committees. We really feel blessed that the community entrusted us with the funds to complete these projects. And as a thank you, we want to invite everyone to a public open house to see our new spaces. This Thursday, September 23rd, all of our schools will be open to the public from 5:00 PM through 8:00 PM. And we want to encourage all of you, along with any friends and neighbors who are interested, to come in and see these wonderful new spaces. So on behalf of the school board and administration, just want to thank everyone who made this exciting project possible, and we look forward to seeing all of you on Thursday out in our schools. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. I would add, give a shout out, I believe it was a Moundsview alum who created that video. So fun to have somebody at Kraus Anderson and her sister, who both had the opportunity to work on the project and be a part of a team. It was great to be together at Edgewood last week, where we had, four years ago, gathered to break ground on all of these projects to celebrate that completion, along with former board members, current board members, facility's task force members, the group from Neighbors United, and other community members who really made this a possibility. So we would extend those additional thanks. And then I can tell you that my graduating class of 2001 will be touring Moundsview High School over the weekend for homecoming. So folks are excited to see the progress because it was about 20 years ago now that we started construction, the last time we had a Capitol campaign. So these are legacy projects that have an impact on our students and our community for years and decades to come. So heartfelt thanks to our community at large for this continued support. Move to item 5.1, student supports update. We're going to welcome Jen Lodeen. And I hear you're going to tell us how bringing back 11,312 kids went.
Yeah.
All right.
And I'm going to practice brevity tonight because, you know, that usually when I have an opportunity to write updates, I can get a little long-winded. But I'm excited to be here, and I appreciate having the opportunity to kind of talk about here the last two weeks as we've returned to school. So our educators have been working very hard to welcome students back, and to have those learning environments ready to go, really looking at taking time to kind of adjust for students across our system. As Superintendent Lennox mentioned earlier, our team has been out in buildings, visiting, checking out teams to get a better understanding of how these first few days have gone and what supports we can provide throughout our system. So we'll continue to monitor those. As we know, the last year and a half, people have experienced this global pandemic in different ways. And so as our team has worked over the summer to think about what those supports in our system will look like, we know that it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all support. So we will really continue to work with parents, caregivers, families, community, and students to best understand what those needs will look like. As we've been out and about, some of the things that we have learned is that certainly there's an excitement for people to be back together again. We'll continue to harness that and support that and continue to have engaging opportunities for students and really monitoring what their needs are as we do that. Secondly, the thing that we've heard is really around stamina as we think about how the school year has started, how it ended last year, is really helping support students around that learning stamina to be here for the full five days and full days a week. So we're going to continue to work with that. And then I kind of just an overview of what we've been working on since last spring as a team. So my plan, as I kind of put my thoughts together for tonight, was to really talk about some of the standard work that we've continued or will continue to have, and then what are some of those new things that we'll be working on and reporting out to the board this year. So we will continue to have our School Link and School Base Mental Health Services at each building. So elementary schools right now are being supported with Family Innovations. They're providing those therapeutic services. At our middle and high schools, we continue to work with Northeast Youth and Family Services, Natus, and Clues to provide those therapeutic services. You can also find contact information for our therapists that we're working with currently in any of those agencies on our website, the student support website, that's available. So parents or students can work directly with their dean, or they can also contact those agencies if they're interested in learning more about what services are available. As in years past, we'll continue to monitor the volume that we're seeing around the need, kind of that intensity and duration as well. So if we see some greater themes in the system, we will work with those agencies to provide those services and supports as we see them. So we'll continue with that. Two other things I want to quickly highlight is last year, our educators in our system took very seriously the Cognito training that we provided, which is an interactive web-based, scenario-based, mental health and suicide prevention training through a partnership with the Department of Health. And we had a very high rate of our educators that participated in that and provided really great feedback about why it was purposeful for them and the things that they learned. We'll continue to have that accessible this year, and we will train any of our new educators this year as we work through that. The other exciting thing about Cognito is as we worked in our partnership with the Department of Health, they named us as a champion district because we were able to implement it across schools and provide that support to staff. So as you remember, last year, or maybe not, but midsummer July, we hired three new staff to our team. We hired two mental health specialists, Julia Geigel and Carla Anton, and then John Norwood, who's helping support chemical health in the system. So all of their contact information is also on the website, and families can reach out directly if they'd like, or they can continue to work with their dean to make those connections for supports.
Can I ask a question? Or do you want to wait till the end?
You can ask.
The Cognito training, is that mandatory for all staff? Or is it self-identified? Like you just opt in if you want to? Or what's the?
We provide it as part of our professional learning on the ITDAP days, is where Carla and Julia worked with principals to be able to support and provide those opportunities for staff. So we did provide that access to them. And then Julie and Carla really followed up with staff members if they didn't have access or weren't able to participate that day to do some follow-up training with them as well.
So every staff member is required to take the training?
Required is a really strong, that's really.
I'm just saying when you make access. Well, I've got access, but that doesn't mean I'm.
But teachers needed to renew their license.
Yes, they do. So it's part of their, we had a very small amount that did not participate. So most, I mean, over 90% of our staff participated in that training last year. And for those that did not, Carla and Julia followed up to provide some additional supports and information for them. And the thing that I, as we think about last year and everything that was happening, I really appreciate that that staff and principals supported this opportunity for that training.
Is this the same training that has been happening as part of licensure, the Cognito? Or is this something?
This is new. Cognito is fairly new. The Department of Health last year received a grant that were able, they were able to provide it to school districts for free. So we looked into that opportunity, and as we recognized that this was a much different, it was a different kind of training than we've had before because there's scenarios, and it's very web-based, interactive, so.
Okay. Because I know, I'm sorry for all the questions, but I know.
It's okay.
Some of, you know, we've really been focusing on this space. And I know some of the criticism I had heard before from folks was the required licensure training on mental health was just like, you know, very low level.
Well, it's not one option, right? For re-licensure, there's many, as long as you get the training, there's many options.
I guess my question, I just want to make sure I understood that this was something enhanced from what we had been doing in the past, kind of the baseline, that this was an enhanced, like, meeting our goals of greater mental health training for all staff?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. The other exciting thing about Cognito is that they are, they've also created a student version. So it's called Friend2Friend. So it's middle school and high school. So we'll be working to implement that this year, and we're pretty excited to have that opportunity to do that. One other thing that I wanted to highlight that we had access to last year, but that will continue this year, is Empower Youth, which is a social-emotional learning tool that's also web-based, that really helps support students. It's over 18 weeks. It's kind of like a course, if you will, that students can participate in. And it's really there to help develop and connect those social-emotional learning tools around whatever their goals or challenges are. And they receive coaching from a mental health licensed professional that can kind of coach them as they build those skills. Where we found the most success in our system in the last year is students who have been diagnosed with anxiety or depression really have had good results with working through Empower Youth. So we've increased the seats that we have available for students. And again, if families or students are interested in that, they can follow up with their dean, or they can also find our contact information on that student website. So those are a couple of the things that we've, that we're having in our system this year to help support students as we monitor and watch closely what some of those trends or needs may be as we move forward.
So how are we communicating with families and with students? I know we really did a great job on that a couple of years ago. And I just want to make sure we don't, you know, it's like we have, we have a lot of new families now in our high schools and our system. So I just want to make sure, like, can we redo all those great communications we had a couple of years ago? There was a lot of social media, student-led videos. I think that stuff was really powerful. And I think we've got a whole, two new, you know, classes of ninth and 10th graders in both of our schools that haven't been exposed to that likely. So I guess I just wanted to point that out. And I mean, I have found the support staff stuff on our webpage, but like, I really have to dig for it. So I'm just wondering how we're making sure kids don't do a lot of website searching. It's more adults that do that.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, no, that's a great suggestion, Sandra. We'll definitely regroup to look at how we can best communicate with families. Sounds great. A couple other things new that we're working on, I mentioned Friend2Friend. Change2Chill is a partnership we have with the Lina, where they, we would do each of the high schools, Moundsview and Irondale, received some grant dollars to be able to create a space where they could really dedicate to mindfulness and stress relief. We have some student ambassadors that are going to help build that site and work with their peers to be able to do that. And they're working closely with a team of deans, and then also with our mental health specialists, Carla, Anton, and Julia Geigel around that space. So we're excited to be able to add that this year as well. The other thing that I wanted to quickly highlight is we are in partnership with the Shoreview Arden Hills Lions. We're going to provide a couple of webinars, like a series, for parents, community members, or caregivers. Carla, Anton, and Julia Geigel will work closely, John Norwood as well, to provide those webinars. And we're really going to base them on how, like, how do we start this school year? How can you best support your student? What are some of those signs and symptoms you might want to be looking for as you provide supports if your student is stressed? How are they making meaning of kind of going back to school and everything that this last year and a half has kind of brought to us? So we're going to have those accessible. We have not picked dates yet, but we're working on doing that. So once we do that, we'll make sure to communicate when those webinars are available, and we can record them and put them right on our website as well, so people can access them later on. So those are a couple other things. Lastly, for the new stuff that we're doing this year, we're working with the Department of Education and the Department of Health. The short version is called COIN, which is a collaborative improvement and innovation network, where we're working with other districts around comprehensive mental health structures and systems. So we're really looking to do that partnership. It's going to be a great opportunity. We're really excited about it. We'll be able to create a team here at the district, where we'll draw people in from the buildings to look at what are the areas that we're really doing well in, where are the areas that we really need improvement, and where can we model other areas of research to be able to best support students? So we'll be providing more updates from our team throughout the year to the board. So that's kind of my update. If there's other questions or supports that you're wondering about, please feel free to reach out, and we can discuss more.
Any questions?
No, this was really great, Jen. Thank you so much for the update.
Thanks for all the work.
Yeah, and all the work, yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect. We'll move to item 5.2, updates. We'll start with AMSD and Legislative. Mr. Demme.
Legislature's not meeting at the moment. AMSD, the last board meeting focused on a presentation by Morris Leatherman. I don't know if some of you folks watched it.
I did.
It was some polling and research and some attitudes in the metro area on a lot of issues, such as masks, limiting the size of events, in-person school, feelings about the seriousness of COVID, school funding referendums, even constitutional page amendment. The conclusion was, as you can probably guess, there were strong feelings on many sides of these issues, and it was interesting to see where some things fell. I don't think it gives anybody roadmaps, but all I have to say is there were a lot of strong feelings by a lot of different people. So that's pretty much it. I think the legislature, as in school and education policy, is not going to meet again this year. There's a, there is a meeting scheduled for reapportionment, I believe, in October for a day, and that's about that. So that's where we're at.
Thanks, Jen. We'll move to 916 of the Ramsey County League, Mary Jo.
Thank you. Regarding Ramsey County League, if you haven't had a chance to look at your email, there are some notes in there on last week's September 10th meeting, which was firsthand experiences with mental illness. And there were some great presenters, a lot of good questions. A panel from NAMI was there, National Alliance on Mental Illness. And then we also talked with the county about what we can do at Ramsey County League to help with the mental illness issues across our cities in Ramsey County. Then in October, which is going to be October 8th, I think, it's a Friday, and that's going to be on homelessness across the county. And that might be interesting to some of you, too. As you know, we have students and families in our district that experience homelessness over a long term or even a short term. It can be very devastating. So that might be something you might be interested in. Again, they're all, the second Friday, 7:30 to 9:00. They're all free to anybody that belongs, all of us are members, the cabinet, anybody the superintendent wants to send can also go. 916, we got a good update on school starting. We started the year without St. Francis. As you know, they left our, they left the consortium at 916. We also then, although Cambria Hills did close, we also ended our agreement to provide them educational services as we were doing that for St. Francis, since St. Francis was an end. We're not doing that anymore. One other thing, we approved through tax tuition rates for just go-year '22. They are staying the same, hourly tuition rates, depending on what is being taught. They're either 1221, 793, or 928. So those are the same as 21. And the membership is also the same, 2150 per pupil.
Great, thank you. Look at item 6.1, school board member reports. Anything to report?
I do, I can share a little bit. I've been able to be in a number of our schools on a volunteer basis. All of my kids have graduated through the system, so for the first time in 20 years, I don't have a kid in Moundsview schools. But I want to make sure I got in some of our schools. So I was able to be over at Edgewood the night of their back-to-school picnic that that the E-PAC group started about 10 years ago. And the excitement in the building from staff and from students and families was just really fun to see. Talked to a number of staff over the last couple of weeks there and at the ALC and at Irondale. And it's just been fun to see everybody back together, to hear the excitement and our staff, and just be appreciative of all the staff that's given the last year and a half to our students and helping them succeed, and be excited to welcome them back in person. I also want to echo a couple of the things that Chris talked about before. I was, I'm a member of the Moundsview Schools Education Foundation, and the Rockville Schoolhouse event was very fun. Thank you to everyone who came. It also was a very successful event, even though we had just a portion of the number of people we've had in previous years because of space accommodations. People in our district are very, very generous, and we were able to fully fund the initiatives that we want to support in the district this year. So that was a really fun event. And also just reminiscent of the last six years and where our facilities have come since then. I came before the board several times four years ago and urged all of our constituents to get out and vote. So I'm very grateful to our community for supporting that bond, very grateful to all the volunteers who were behind the scenes and helping get out the vote. And also to all the people who helped on the design teams, to all the kind of behind-the-scenes people at each one of our schools that helped deal with all the construction behind, you know, all that was going on while they were trying to educate students and appreciative of all that. It's fun to see the spaces being utilized. It's just really an exciting time. So, thanks.
Since we didn't have our Irondale student representative, I would just say, Irondale had their homecoming last Friday. They won their football game against Tartan. There was a ton of excitement even in middle school at Edgewood and at Sunnyside for homecoming this week. Like, my third grader was excited for homecoming. So they just did a really good job of like, bringing in the elementary school and the middle school. The middle school had Spirit Week for homecoming, so there was just a lot of excitement built around homecoming this year, which was just really fun to see all the kids come together to be excited about something.
Thank you. Other reports. Mary Jo.
Just one quick thing, as I was at the Valentine Tales PTO meeting out in the playground last week. A reminder to the board as well as the community, if you go, if you shop at Amazon, you can join Amazon Smile. And you just set it up once and you can put in whatever school you would like, and they will get a portion of your purchase. And so it was really easy to do, you and I did it, so.
Great. Other reportman reports.
Yeah, I guess I'll just echo a lot of the, I just want to reflect the construction report we had tonight, that being the final, and really putting a bow on that project. And the comments my colleagues have already made about kind of wrapping that up and thanking everyone in the community for that. But it's, you know, it's been a long, a long few years, and it's exciting. It's, our focus has been on a lot of other things in the past 18 months. But I just think it's really, I just want to take a moment to just really reflect on the gravity of that significant construction project this district underwent while we kept students in the building and came in on time and on budget in a really, you know, just fantastic upgrades to all of our facilities. So I got a chance to tour Irondale and Chippewa last week. Just, those were two schools I hadn't really seen the final, I hadn't seen the auditorium completed, so that was really fun to see. And the significant safety improvements made at Chippewa. So just wanted to add that in, and really exciting to have that all done and be moving forward and enjoying those spaces. My, I walked at Moundsview High School, it was back-to-school night last week. So I got to walk my kids' schedules. And my son has probably, obviously has five classes. I think he's got four in new spaces. So that's pretty fun. He gets to enjoy that as a senior, so.
As usual, my colleagues have stolen my best material to close out the meeting. Unlike you, Heidi, we did put three of our boys on the bus on the first day of school. I'm quite certain I saw a single tear of joy roll down my wife's cheek as the bus pulled away from our house. But a heartfelt thank you to everybody involved, sprinting at Lennox, all the way down to everybody in the buildings, our teachers, our paras, and our tech staff deploying and redeploying technology coming off of distance to hybrid learning. I mean, it is an incredible effort to bring the buildings that we have back online in the midst of construction, our consorians. It's a remarkable effort over the summer to do what you do to get us prepared to welcome 11,000-plus students and give 1,400 staff members back into our buildings and to do it with ease. The one thing that has not been mentioned, so I will mention it, is a thank you to American Student Transportation, our other bus providers. While other districts were, you know, dealing with the headlines of busing issues, we certainly had some, but nothing anywhere near what so many districts dealt with with regards to staffing and delays and timing issues. So really grateful for that partnership as well. So all in all, I think a gold star on the beginning of the school year. So thank you for the work, and please share that with your entire team and the entire staff across the district. With that, is there anything else to come for the board? We are adjourned.